Thank you. Okay. First up is Nolan. They're here for pre-preliminary, preliminary, and final. No, yes, final. Jay?
Yep.
What do you got?
Okay, very small addition, 350 square feet. To put a little bit more office and a new restroom in the, at the south end of the site.
Okay. The proposed addition is minor, has no significant impacts. It says it should go to Akabor.
We'd like to ask for a waiver of that. The addition is going to be in the same appearance as the existing building. There's no new landscaping, there's no new signage, there's no new lighting. It's just the shell is going to follow the same appearance as what's there. And it's a very minimal application. It's not even, what's that?
Putting the fence back up?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a nice little site. It's not.
It's very mild.
It's nothing major, so, okay, that's fine. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, the applicant should relocate the modified existing sanitary building connection. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Rockland County Planning, they have seven. What are we overriding?
We'd like to ask for an override on four, five, and six. We're not having any new lighting, we're not having any new signage, and we're not removing any trees, and we weren't planning on adding anything.
And seven, you already comply with the overlay zone, correct?
As much as we could.
Yeah, right.
We had gotten variances from the prior application for whatever we didn't comply with.
Okay, so I'll get back to that. Well, okay, so, highway has nothing. County Health has nothing. Sewer does nothing. You just have to make sure that with drainage that you're complying with whatever they ask you to do, which is really, you're not doing anything, and that's all they want us to tell, to let us know, that if you are, you need to file for the necessary permits.
Correct. We do have to go to the Drainage Agency for a permit, just like we did the first time around.
Fine.
Just because we're close to the Spark Hill.
The Orange Town Zoning Board of Appeals, New York State Department of Transportation, the Rockland County Highway Department, and the Rockland County Department of Health do not object to this board serving as lead agency. What else? What do I got? It, where did this come from? I don't have anything for state. No. No, that's just that the DOT doesn't object to us serving as lead agency. Huh? But this is just somebody who wrote this down. Where did the thing about the New York DOT come from?
The DOT, they, uh,
Where is it?
They wrote.
Okay, well, I'll put it in there. Any work proposed within the New York State Right-Away requires a highway work permit.
We're not doing anything in the right-ofway.
Okay, so, Mr. Warren?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Bond.
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, Mr. Sweeney. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Mandell.
No, not Mandell.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this? I see none, and I hear none. I need a motion to close. Thank you, Mr. Bond, second. Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, we're going to give them final with conditions. We are not, uh, we said that we're not going to send them to Akabor. It's de minimis. Bruce Peters, one.
Yeah.
Oh, hold on, I'm getting, no, sorry, okay. What's that?
Motion for lead agency.
We didn't, we're not going to. Sorry, I thought this was for final. Okay, so, Mr. Bond makes a motion for lead agency. Uh, Mr. Mandell, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion for neg deck. Mr. Bond makes the motion for neg deck. Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor? Aye. Now, conditions. Mr. Bond makes the motion for final with conditions. Seeing that we're not allowing, not asking them to go to Akabor, Mr. Giordella has none. Bruce Peters has one. Rockland County, one, and two. Three. Okay, I'm getting there. God, you guys are worse than me. Okay, so, I need a condition, I need a motion to override number four.
Motion.
Mr. Mandell makes the motion, Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
They are not adding any lighting, so that we do not require a lighting plan.
Are there any issues at current time with the lighting there?
And there are no issues with those current lighting or complaints. I need a motion to override number five. Mr. Mandell makes the motion, Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor? Aye, and that is because...
The sign isn't being changed, same sign.
There's no sign change.
And there's no signs in the right-ofway, right?
And there's no signs in the right-ofway. Okay. Number six. Mr. Warren makes the motion to override number six, second. Mr. Sweeney, seconds, and that's because they're not changing any of the landscaping, and we're not requiring them to do so.
What about seven? Seven's all right?
We are, oh, yeah, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Uh, what about seven? Do we, should we override it, or should we?
They complied.
They complied, okay. So, as far as number seven is concerned, for the record, they have already complied with number seven. Thank you. Uh, I need, uh, second for final. Mr. Sweeney, seconds for final, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
With the state? Oh, they're not doing the state.
The county Drainage Agency.
Yeah, that if you need to do, we already said it, it's in there. So, if you're, if you are doing anything, you have to get the permission from the Drainage Agency. Bye now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Linen. They're here for preliminary and pre-preliminary. PB number 17-32. All right, so, there's going to be a lot of people here. So, I'll read a couple of these, so... So, if you're going to be speaking on behalf of the applicant, you need to come to the table, you need to sign in, and you need to state your name and your affiliation with the project for the record.
Yes.
So, who are we?
Jesse Coakley, from Mazer Consulting, engineer of record for the project.
Donald Brenner, the attorney for the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Brenner, what say ye?
Okay, um, Linen Choice is a company, it is a bedding and import supplier. And they mainly import and supply retail and home bedding to large retail stores and ho, and hotels. The products imported are retail packaging with no manufacturing requested on the site. Linen Choice imports items such as bed sheets, comforters, pillows, quilts, and blankets. All the merchandise is imported and delivered to the warehouse by container. These containers are parked in the loading docks until they are completely unloaded. We normally receive two to four containers per week. Orders are picked up towards the end of the day, before 5:00 p.m. Normally, there will be two or three trucks that will come to pick up the outgoing orders. Our operation does not require any work outside of the warehouse facility. Linen Choice entire workforce consists of approximately 25 employees. Normal operations are from 9:00 to 5:00, and 8:00 to 6:00 in a busier season. They are purchasing the property that's located to the east of the Aloof manufacturing facility. They are in no way connected or related to Aloof. This is a real estate transaction. The seller is not involved with the manufacturing. The buyer is strictly buying it for the purposes which we told you.
Okay. Is that it?
Uh, well, for further information, this project has received final approval in a larger building back in the year 2004. This building has been scaled down, it is smaller, and at that time, we have, we have final approval for the larger building.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
The PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agency for this project. Office of Building Zoning and Planning Administration Enforcement, John Giordella, June 28, 2017. I'm going to read most of these, however, the ones that I don't read, which are technical, are available for you to read in the back. Number one, on October 13, 2004, the Orange Town Planning Board granted Aloof real property a final site plan approval for 231,086 square foot building, subject to comments. This new site plan shows a slightly smaller building of 170,735 square feet. Now, I have a question right away. This, uh, site plan was granted to Aloof approval, so why, um, what difference does that make? So, you know, if they're not related, then don't they just have to reapply all over again?
That's why we're doing it.
So, the, so that's ridiculous to say that we, who cares if you had approval and it was bigger?
I think your, I think your application specifically says, was any work done on this property before? We are telling you the work was done, there was a larger building approved, all these things were approved, and they went out.
But approval doesn't mean anything.
It does mean.
No, it doesn't. Number two.
I'm, I'm not going to argue with you.
Good, you shouldn't. The property line to the north should have a buffer setback of 100 feet and a yard setback of 50 feet, making the overall setback 150 feet from the property line to the building. The yard setback is taken from the buffer line and can be reduced up to 50% by the planning board. Please correct the drawings. The property does not, the property does not front on a town road. Therefore, zoning board of appeals variance needs to be sought for zero frontage, and a 280A exception needs to be granted. Please correct the zoning bulk table to include the street frontage and the 288 exception. The traffic evaluation submitted by Mazer Consulting indicates the intersection of Route 303 and Glenshaw Street is currently operating in a level of service C. However, the traffic impact study for the prior warehouse submission submitted by the TRC Raymond Keys Associates has that intersection as a level of service F. Please clarify how these differ so much. Also, adjacent street intersections should be studied and their level of service provided for no build and build scenarios. The planning board should request a full environmental assessment form be submitted. Six, a water course diversion permit shall be obtained from the town board. Seven, the plans shall be reviewed by Akabor. Eight, the plans show 22 outdoor loading birds. No outdoor loading birds are permitted except by permission of the zoning board of appeals or planning board. Please explain why 22 loading birds are required. The building footprint shows two separate units in the building. Please label each unit as phase one and phase two, or submit for an internal commercial subdivision. Please clarify.
Would you like these things answered now?
You can answer them all at the time.
Pardon me?
At the same time when I'm done reading the comments. Which is usually what happens. Mr. Peters' letter from June 23, 2017 seemed to be pretty technical. Unless anybody has any objections, we'll just note that there's 22 comments that have to be looked at. Again, if you looked, if you want to see what the comments are from Mr. Peters, they're in the back. Rockland County Department of Planning has 12. Rockland County Highway.
You might want to read three on the planning.
Okay. Number three, Rockland County Department of Planning. The applicant has indicated that this use consists mostly of warehouse and office uses. However, it was further indicated that on occasion, there will be need to perform alterations on site, which would involve light manufacturing uses. It must be clarified as to what is involved with these alterations, and to what extent did the operation consist of these alterations. Furthermore, it must be clarified that the light manufacturing component would produce noise or odors. Something that we should all consider, don't you think, Mr. Brenner?
Yes, we should.
Okay. So, like I said, there's 12. Highway Department has two. Rockland County Health has two. Rockland County Sewer does not object to us serving as lead agency and requests no future correspondence. Drainage. Rockland County Drainage. Has two. The letter from Rockland County Drainage, just so that, oh, okay, I got it now, never mind. Michael Bettman, Chief Fire Inspector, has nine. Then there's correspondence from Rockland County Department of Health, Orange Town ZBA, Rockland County Highway Department, and New York State Department of Transportation has noted that there is a existing railroad crossing in the vicinity of this project. Any hazardous material transportation will be a concern. And then there's a full assessment, full EAF. And what about Booker? And then from Booker Engineering, the applicant has provided sufficient information to demonstrate that the proposed project can provide a zero net increase in peak water storm more enough rates and can mitigate potential significant adverse impacts with respect to stormwater quantity and quality. We therefore recommend that the Linen Choice amended site plan be approved for drainage, subject to the above project comments. There are 13, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. And then, well, I'm not going to, I mean, we'll read, there's also the traffic evaluation prepared by Mazer. Can I hold on to this? The full EAF? I said, I said that, I said that. Okay. That's all I have. Right? Mr. Warren?
Could, could we answer some of the questions?
Go ahead.
Jesse?
Yeah. So, I'll just go briefly through, Mr., sure. I'll just go briefly through Mr. Giordello's comments. If you have, request additional explanation, I can certainly expand a little more. Number one, just comment noted, talks about the smaller plan, the smaller warehouse that is this current plan as compared to 2004. Number two, this setback would require 35% reduction, relaxation from this board for the setback, not the full 50% that you can allow the setback reduction.
So, what does that mean?
So, it's not the maximum. We're still requesting a relax from the setback requirement on top of the 100-foot buffer of about 25 feet.
So, instead of 150, you're asking for 125?
It would be, I have the measurement on the plan, it's like 135, I think.
So, instead of 150, it's going to be 135?
Right, 100-foot buffer is required.
What's that?
100? 100-foot buffer is required, and then there's a 50-foot yard setback that's required. However, the planning board can reduce the yard setback up to 50%. So, that's what he's explaining right now.
So, the building is setback 132.27 feet.
Okay.
The third one deals with defrontage. This property lacks it, so we would need the 280A exception from the zoning board of appeals. We did update the plan accordingly to reflect that. I can show you where the access would be for this property, if you'd like, which will help clarify that at least a little bit.
Well, are you going to be coming off of Mountain View?
No, we'll be coming, accessing out to 303.
The same, the same driveway that Aloof uses?
Correct.
Not Quantrill Street, that's correct.
Correct. So, here's, here's the tax map, just for an overall view. This is our property here. 303 is out here. Here's the railroad. Here's the Aloof property. There's an easement that exists from our property through that Aloof property to Glenshaw Street.
Where's the rail trail?
Rail trail's on this side. So, the, the access, proposed access is altered here, trucks will circulate, leave that way as well. There is on the plan an emergency access provided up here, strictly for emergency vehicle access.
Where's the rail trail? I'm sorry, I'm not talking about the railroad, I'm talking about the rail trail.
Yeah, rail, yeah, this is in here. Railroad over here. Rail trail on this side.
So, this should be updated to save that trail.
Yeah, this is just the tax map, how our plan actually has to be, um, we'll put together, this is one comment, this is a Reno at, at PRC. What we will do is put this information on one plan, which is the survey, and it has the easements that comes through here, and then it continues out to Glenshaw Street. And so, it's labeled rail trail here, we'll be able to railroad it, build out on one. Number four deals with the traffic evaluation that we submitted, and then compared to the prior traffic application that was submitted, prepared by Raymond Keys Associates. So, as noted in that comment, um, the Raymond Keys Associates traffic study indicated a level of service F under the 2002 existing conditions. The difference in the level of service, um, from 2002 to 2017 is a direct result of the existing traffic volumes decreasing on Route 303 in that area. The counts were performed in 2002, had weekday peaks of about 1,600 vehicles in the morning and 1,900 vehicles in the afternoon. The updated counts that were performed by Mazer Consulting, formerly John Collins Engineering, found 1,200 weekday morning, which is about 350 less than 2002, and in the afternoon, 1,500, which is about 400 vehicles less than in 2002. Because we got those numbers, we compare that to historical data that DOT has provided, which reflects that there has actually been a decrease in traffic and growth in that area. So, that can be directly, that is why the counts for our numbers were lower, and a level C. It is worth noting, again, granted, it was a prior approval, but it is a smaller warehouse. In the Raymond Key, uh, excuse me, Raymond Keys Associates traffic letter, or traffic report, he did state that there would be no impact to the surrounding neighborhoods as a result of the proposed warehouse.
Which, which proposed warehouse, the new?
The 230,000 square foot.
Okay, well, I haven't seen that proposed warehouse, and I have no idea what it means. But if you're telling me that there's 22 truck bays coming into this warehouse, you're going to try telling me that that's not going to, uh, to impact the stu, the traffic that's in the area?
So, the reason for the increased number of truck bays, which ties into Mr. Giordello's comment number eight, is, as you heard, Mr. Brenner's...
And we're not going to override, we're not going to, we're going to go back, you're going to give me your comments about number six and seven.
Yes, I'm just tying it to what he said, yes. So, the number of bays is really a result of their operations. When they bring in the containers, as Mr. Brenner said, they're there until they unload them. So, sometimes that takes up some of the bays that they need. They also wanted to have separate incoming and outgoing bays for their operation.
But that's still a significant, I mean, so, so do we have a number of how many trucks are coming in and out of the property on a daily basis? Huh?
Yeah.
How many?
15 maximum, I think.
Yeah.
15?
15.
Okay, so there's 15 maximum trucks that are coming in here, but we're dealing with 22 truck bays?
Right down, six and then 15 something?
Yes. They're using the bays to leave the container there so that they can be unloaded in terms of how the warehouse operates.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Then, the reason for the truck bays on the other side, now, the truck bays on the other side are also for access or ease of use around the property, as opposed to doing, transporting materials inside the facility. It would be easier if they can just pull the truck up to one side, similar to, um, if you had a garage that looped around your front yard and went to the garage on the side. Sometimes you're going to hop out at the front door, sometimes you're going to hop out by the garage. It's really just a, a convenience, um, thing. Now, the, this, it kind of ties into comment number nine of Mr. Giordello's, and I am going to go back, where he talks about phase one and phase two. Phase two is going to be the smaller of the two warehouse buildings that they may build in the future, they may not. That's, that includes five truck bays of the 22. So, as part of phase one, it's just the 17 truck bays. That's their intent to construct primarily, and we will delineate that clearly on all future plans. Number five, jumping back, the planning board requesting a full EAF. We did submit that as a request. The water course diversion permit from the town board, that was...
That, that diversion was approved by the town board at their meeting on December 15, 2003. They, they approved the diversion of the water course.
Okay, well, the problem is with that, I have with that, is that that was for a completely, uh, separate application. So, as far as I'm concerned, and, you know, this is just one member, you're going to have to go back to the town board, and you're going to have to get the water diversion again.
Okay, I, I just want to straighten something out legally. Legally, a water course diversion comes from the town board. The town board grants us the right to move this, this channel and pipe it. This is done whether they put in an igloo there, this is done whether they put the original building there. The town board has granted this applicant the right to change the water course.
It's not the same applicant.
The town board has granted...
It's not the same applicant. I don't care, I don't care, Mr. Brenner.
Well, the only thing I'll say is, in looking at it, what, Mr. Brenner brought this up to me ahead of time, that there's no expiration in the statute, and there is none, there's no expiration on the approval. But, but, if you look at Bruce Peters' comment, I think it was six...
Okay, well, let me just read that, so that's for the record.
Nine. I, it was, I just want to make sure it's the right one. It was nine. There's concern, and I didn't bring this to his attention, I noticed it as we were reading, but...
Okay, so I'll read it.
It appears that there's, you know, other issues, and...
If there are issues, we will correct them, but the town board has granted the right to divert this stream and pipe it.
Well, I'm not saying that it's still valid because of the changes to the stormwater regs, which, which he comments on. So, if you want to read nine.
I will. "It appears that the existing stream slash drainage ditch, which runs along the northwest portion of the property, is being proposed to be piped in. The applicant and the applicant's engineer is advised that in order to pipe in a stream or ditch swell, the applicant must apply to the town of Orange Town Town Board for a waiver course diversion permit to do such work. As part of that application, the applicant's engineer shall provide drainage calculations to show that the proposed piping can accommodate, carry the one-year, 100-year storm. Analyze the effects, negative and positive, both upstream and downstream that piping the stream may cause or create. Show by calculation and drawing the effect of removal of the natural floodway will affect this site and downstream properties, et cetera. It should also be noted that piping in a stream for the sole purpose of creating more usable land is in direct opposition with the intent and spirit of the green infrastructure portion of the New York State SSMDM. Also, as the portion of the Spark Hill Creek this is, that this site drains to, is now under consideration, i.e. on the New York State DEC tentative revised list of impaired waters, and in all probability will be added to the New York State DEC 303D list of impaired waters. Piping in a stream that feeds the Spark Hill will only tend to exacerbate the existing problems with the Spark Hill Creek. Therefore, this department strongly disagrees... Therefore, this department strongly disagrees, discourages this work."
Okay, we will answer Mr. Peters' requirements in terms of the flows, in terms of what is being done. We will meet all proper statutes, but please understand the diversion to do this piping can be done tomorrow. We don't even need a permit, the man can go in tomorrow and put the pipe in. Please understand, we will speak to Mr. Peters, we will work with Mr. Peters. In fact, if you read the decision, they said this was a good move for the Spark Hill Creek. It is part of the town board decision where they favored us doing it because it would help the Spark Hill Creek. So there is conflicting thoughts on Mr. Peters, which we will speak to.
Anything else?
I think the next one was just Akebor, we don't object to that, obviously. And then you also had, read comment number three from county planning, which asked about what alterations would be done on the property that we're defining as light manufacturing. As Mr. Brenner explained, they're really linens warehousing, curtains, sheets, pillowcases, things like that. They service the hotel industry, so on occasion there is need to repair some of these linens. It's really just sewing, that type of stuff, so it's the far lightest of light manufacturing. And it would be done outside, there will be no noise associated with that, it will all, obviously, be indoors, and also, no odor associated with that. That reminds me with the-
Can I just clarify that, is it hand sewing, is it machines?
It would probably be a machine, just, you know, inside, done by, done by the employees at the facility. One question that I did have, actually, back to Mr. Giudello's number eight, he talks about the loading berths permitted outside. I saw that that was for the CS zone, but we're in the LI zone, so does that still apply, even though we're in a different zone?
LI is the CS zone.
Okay, 'cause it is a permitted use in the LI zone, so it doesn't, it doesn't refer you to that CS bulk table. I didn't think so. I, if it does, we will, we have to go to the zoning board for the zero frontage anyway, so we can ask for it, but I just wanted to state that I didn't see it on, I just asked him for clarification.
Number six in the CS, if you look at the LI zone, column seven, item number two, it says same as CS, numbers four, five, and six. Six of CS reads, no outdoor loading berths are permitted except by permission of the zoning board of appeals or planning board.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Should I say for planning?
Yes. Correct. Well, under site plan approval, the planning board can approve it. If he required a special permit by the zoning board, then he would ask for that at the zoning board's approval process.
Okay.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warren?
I just have one question. Going back to this quote, man, factory, you're saying that you're repairing linens or whatever was in that, that's, has a problem for the warehouse?
Potentially, potentially.
If that's the case, would you do-
Be cleaning them also, or just repairing?
No, just repairing. Cleaning does not take place at the facility.
Okay, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Bond?
Okay, well, we just need clarification on that piping, that's really what I said.
Yep, that and a couple other things. Ms. Sweeney?
I think a lot of issues have been brought up by the people who reported, and I'd have to wait to see the answer to those before I can make any decision.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeney, Mr. Mandell?
I have a few questions. Did you get the easement, the access roads to aloof here?
Yes, we have.
We get it, and Mr. Coakley sent me an email, you're gonna provide a title-
Report, everything.
Report indicating that you have-
Yes, we will.
Now, along with those alterations, are there any chemicals that dies, or anything else will be used?
No, no, sir.
So there'll be nothing at all?
Nope.
No hazardous chemicals at all stored on this facility?
None whatsoever.
You're talking about sewing and cutting only?
That's it.
That's a repair of sewn. I don't know what they're gonna-
Yeah, yeah, it's just-
Repair using what?
Sewing machines, otherwise, sir.
Okay. Okay, now, those trucks again, how many trucks a week are coming and tractor trailers, the deliveries?
He wants to reach.
Yeah, it's-
Do it again.
They say they receive two to four containers per week.
What size? So what are we talking about? Are we talking about forty footers on the back of a, on the back of a semi? Are we talking about twenty footers? What are we talking about? Okay.
I believe they're tractor trailers, forty footers, that would be in the loading bays. Fit in the loading bays.
Okay, how many trucks will they be using for deliveries?
Um, I believe they're-
They again said two to three trucks will come to pick up outgoing orders. No, it's trucks will come in to pick up the outgoing orders from the building, and it's two to three trucks per day.
Yeah.
Okay, but why do we still need seventeen bays? We might have two or three trucks, even if you find an extra one, four trucks, four bays, you still have thirteen days, and I have thirteen tractor trailers parked there?
Yes, they partially unload the vans and bring it into the warehouse and distribute the way they're going, and then it goes out that way. So some of them are partially unloaded per orders, and that's how it goes.
Yeah, sometimes the, the containers might be on site overnight, you know, I believe in the, in the letter there, it says that normally there'd be two to three trucks that will come to pick up the orders, and they're usually picked up towards the end of the day, before five PM. But if they drop the container off, it might be there, they might not unload it by the time they close at six PM, so the, the container might be there overnight.
Yeah, but you're still talking about seventeen bays. You're talking about maybe two to four trucks staying overnight, and then they'll be gone, and two or three trucks coming in for pickups and whatever. You're not talking about seventeen bays, that's fourteen bays. I think you should take a look at the number of bays and reduce the amount of impervious surfaces.
One of the things that we had talked about at PRC to try to reduce the amount of impervious was looking at the drive aisles, and we've talked with Mr. Bettman about that as well, to go down to what they would require, 'cause right now we have thirty-foot drive aisles, but we could go down to twenty-six that would still meet the fire department's requirements. And because of the length of the drive aisles around the site, we could really cut down on that. The, as I had stated before, it's, the number of bays isn't really a direct correlation to the number of trucks that are coming to the site at any one time. It's more of an operational thing on their end, which is a preference. So if this board, you know, feels that that's too much, it's definitely something they can look into and try to reduce where they can to accommodate your requests.
I think that's what he's asking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's my opinion, I don't know about the number of bays, but I think it should be reduced.
I mean, I get the two locations, that makes sense, especially looking at the plan there, but those two that are right next to each other, you might be able to reduce some of the bays there.
Okay, can you, over the days, over the week, are you operating your manufacturing, the plant itself?
Um, it's, it's open Monday through Friday, closed on the weekends, and it's really just a shipping warehouse. The alterations will be done on an as-needed basis, but they are infrequent.
The hours of operation, seven thirty to six?
Um, I believe they provided us with an update.
Nine, nine to five, and they said, however, during the busy seasons, it might go from eight to six.
Okay, so it's not changed, the report has to be amended?
Yes, the narrative will be updated.
And I think it's also on the EAF?
Yes.
So you have to please update the EAF?
We'll do that.
So eight to, so it'll be eight to-
Eight to six would be the max.
Eight to six when it's busy season, otherwise it's gonna be nine to five?
That's correct.
Okay, Monday to Friday. On the EAF, page eleven, E two H, you state the project contains no streams, then why are you proposing to pipe the stream?
It's not what the DEC or the Drainage Agency defines as a stream, it's an open ditch that receives the runoff from the stormwater basin to the north. It's dry when it's not raining. It's really a ditch, not, not a stream. I can clarify that on the EAF.
Yes, we can clarify that, as we read nine. Now, on the EAF, page ten, E A reminder four, many of the areas noted on toxic sites that be disturbed during construction.
Um, which, which number?
Okay, that would be page ten, bottom of page, H three.
Yes.
You're talking about the soils with certain presence of certain-
Yeah, these, yeah, these were not on this property. It's projects that came up in the DEC database search that are not this property. They're within two thousand feet of this property, which is the radius that the DEC puts on, but it's not at this property.
It's not on your property?
Correct.
Going back to that ditch or stream or whatever that you wanna pipe on, that you say without approval, what's gonna happen to the current runoff that goes into the stream from your property? Where's that gonna go?
Well, from the ditch that receives the runoff to the north, we're gonna take that down via pipe to where the ditch eventually is. From on our property, we're gonna be collecting that in a series of inlets, and then treating it in either some subsurface detention basins, bioretention areas, or regular detention areas. It's, it's gonna be like a series. It usually, most of it goes through all three, there are parts that just go through two, so.
Stayed on page six of the EAF, you talk about water runoff to adjacent properties. Which properties have had a speed runoff?
So the way that the existing drainage flows is from west to east towards the aloof property. We would look to maintain that drainage pattern and discharge to the existing locations. So from west to east towards the aloof property. We're not increasing flows, we're decreasing flows as required by the state.
Now, you describe the green infrastructure that you're proposing, is there rain gardens, use the rainwater for runoff, landscape irrigation?
So what we are doing is some, a series of infiltration basins, one, to recharge the groundwater. Number two, we are doing bioretention areas to filter the water, and then it goes into the detention systems. There's also some pretreatment for those required as well, which we're doing.
So you're not putting in any rain gardens, you're not putting this water for any sort of irrigation project?
Well, a bioretention area is essentially a rain garden. It's a planted filter media-
What plants are gonna be put in there?
It'll be landscaped in accordance with the DEC manual, as I think Mr. Peters raised in his comment, so we'll follow those landscape requirements, which are from the Stormwater Design Manual, that can, they basically say if you're in this zone, which allows ponding, you have to put in this certain plant, if you put in this one-
Well, when are we, when are we gonna expect the landscaping plan?
A landscaping plan for Akebor.
Well, for us first?
Do you wanna see it first?
We could certainly do that, yeah, I have no issue with that.
Anything else, Ms. Mandell? Huh?
Yeah, I'm just checking.
No rush, I'm just asking.
I don't know. Nothing further at this time, but in case anybody brings up their shoes that come with public question, reserve the right to ask for the shoes.
Can I ask one more real quick question?
Of course.
Just for clarification on terminology, you keep, you're saying tractor trailers and containers, are they the same? 'Cause usually a container is something that's dropped off and left versus a tractor trailer who stays on wheels and is mobile?
They would be, containers that would be dropped off. I was using tractor trailer as a terminology for size comparison.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna let this public speak, and then I'm gonna say what I have to say after that. So, is that it for everybody? You guys can, we can come back if you have any other questions. So, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to the public. We do have a three-minute minimum.
Max, max me.
Sorry, max one. It's been a long day. So, we, I, if you've been to my planning board meetings, you know that I follow the rules pretty strictly. I'm not trying to be rude, but we do have other items on this agenda tonight that we need to get to, so who wants to be first? Come on up, ma'am, state your name, come up to the podium. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Amy Pritchett, one eleven South Main Street, Pearl River, New York. P R I T C H E T T. Very quick question, are any of these items delivered going to be packaged at this warehouse?
Okay, so the way this works, and I won't even start the clock, is that you'll ask us the questions, we'll write them down, and at the end, the applicant can answer or not answer based on that, but you're, we're not, I mean, if you've been to a town board, we're not-
I thought I was asking you, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just wanna make sure it's clear for the audience, that you'll expect, you'll, you'll address the board and not the applicant, and if the applicant chooses, chooses to answer the questions, then he has that right or not, so we'll try to do the best we can to answer all your questions, but yes, that's a good question. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next. Again, state your name and your address for the record, please.
How you doing? Ira Steinberg, ten Murphy Court, Blarvelt, New York. Ten Murphy Court. Few thoughts I've had in my head, I'm looking at it, first I drove down three oh three, I saw numerous commercial properties already existing available, FedEx Center, Golden Cross is gonna be moving, the space above Restaurant Depot, Bradley Park Corporate Center is empty, there's space right across from Mountain View on three oh three opposite, they could build up to three hundred and fifty square feet, right across from the, 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 the driving range is a big space, there's an existing building that's empty currently right now, so there's already numerous existing commercial properties on three oh three, either built or on three oh three that are available. Number two, Mr. Brenner references two thousand and four approval, that was also before a lot of things that were built in that area now, that are been built since then, that needs, that might change, you know, the whole figure of the area. I know the town spent a lot of money extending the rail trail, they wanna build it up to ten feet to the rail trail with roads and trucks moving right by the rail trail. I mean, they, you know, we just connected Spark Hill to Blarvelt, now that's just negatively impeded the rail trail. Also, there's a new cul-de-sac of eleven houses that were built since that time, that are also potentially negatively impacted. Third thing, you know, St. Catherine's is used as a UPK center for the town and the county, so there's, St. Catherine's preschool has a lot of kids going there because it's one of a few UPK centers, and they'd be building right up against, you know, the exist, you know, St. Catherine's Nursery School area.
Well, with the buffer and the rail trail separating it, so let's just be clear.
Sure.
Okay.
Number three, the applicant is linen choice, I don't know if that's just a front for aloof, we don't know what that is. I looked up the background, I see they have an existing property in Suffolk, and their headquarters is in Brooklyn, but there's very little information about them. I don't know if this is a front for aloof or what's going on. I know aloof hasn't been the greatest neighborhood the last many years, including, especially in the last year where the smells have been atrocious, and they've been brought in front of board, and the ZB had numerous times, and they're trying to supposedly resolve their issues, but we've been smelling it for years. And lastly, the emergency access, emergency access they reference is old emergency access for the old railroad, you know, tracks, and that now connects to a cul-de-sac, which is Murphy Court, where there's seventeen kids that live on that cul-de-sac, that weren't, that weren't around when this two thousand and four approval was. So it's just a few points I want you guys to consider when you, you know, consider this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Heather Hurley, 202 Hobart Street, Pearl River. Hobart, H-O-B-A-R-T. Just for some clarification, with their original application and approval from 2004, is this considered a brand-new application?
Yes.
It is, okay. Also wanted to just echo the, some of the comments about Murphy Court being non-existent back in 2004, and how would that impact that cul-de-sac that has now been built since then? Also regarding the 22 loading bays...
I'm sorry, the 22 what?
Loading bays or loading docks?
Thank you.
Why do they need to be open and not enclosed? This is the same issue that was brought up for the Subaru expansion as well, so if the applicant could please explain why they need to be open. And regarding the hours of operations, are the trucks coming in and out outside of those hours of operations? And will they be entering and leaving in the middle of the night with beeping trucks backing up in those loading docks? And at any time, will the entrance on North Troop Road be used outside of emergency access? And regarding the traffic study, did anyone take into account the additional garbage truck traffic that is proposed for the new Planet Energy proposal in Stony Point? Because I was at a meeting last night, and they said there would be, they did bring up Route 303 in their presentation, as well as 9W, and that proposal could possibly bring hundreds of garbage trucks up and down those roads to get to Stony Point for a new gasification plant. So, I just wanted to address that as well and see if that was taken into account with their traffic study. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Anthony Lopfido, 30 North Troop Road. Common spelling. L-O-P-E-R-F-I-D-O. 30 North Troop Road. Some of these people have already commented and said the same basic thing that I like to say. Living on North Troop Road, we are right there with the post office, which has tractor trailers coming in. The access road, I'd like to see if they could specify where that access road is going to go to, how far close to the post office, how far close to Murphy Court. Is it, and basically, what's going to be the layout? Hours of operation, they said during holiday time or busy time, it's going to be open longer. Well, what's a busy time in the holiday, in the hotel industry? That's basically 365 days a year that hotels need linens and so forth. So, kind of fuzzy there, and what's going to be their normal operation and what's going to be a busy time? During the busy, during the normal times of the tractor trailers, again, what time period are they going to be coming in and out? If it's only four trucks, what time period during the day are they going to be in and out? I've been at North Troop Road now for 19 years. I've seen the increase of the post office, I've seen the increase of the tractor trailers on 303 from the FedEx building, and now you're going to add even more tractor trailers on that road. Be interesting to see that traffic impact study that they have. When was it done? Was it 2004? Like the gentleman said before, that was before the FedEx building came into existence, before the Restaurant Depot and the other big projects in the area before that came out. So, with the increased traffic that Orange Town's already done to improve that, now you're just going to increase the volume of tractor trailers and large, heavy equipment in the area.
Thank you. Next. Nobody? Okay, so I need a motion to close. Thank you, Mr. Mandel.
Second.
Mr. Warren, thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At the very least, I think that the property along the rail trail needs to be cleaned up. It's a dump. I don't know who's been dumping stuff along there, along the fence line, but if this application is going to go forward, then that's one of the things that I'm going to request. I'm not in favor of moving this forward tonight. I think that the applicant, and again, I only speak for one person, you feel, if you have, I'll poll you, and if you want to vote for this to move it forward, you can. I think that the diversion of the stream has to be clarified with the town board. I think they need to go back and, at the very minimum, get recertification that says that that's okay.
Can I answer some of the...
No, not until I'm done.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
I also think that Mr. Collins should come back and explain the traffic study. I don't think, Ms. Hurley, I don't, it's not there, if the, if the thing that you were talking about that's happening in Stony Point hasn't happened yet, they can't take, they can't speculate on a traffic study. But I will, I'm asking them to come back, and I don't, I'd really like to get justification on how they could say that traffic hasn't increased in that area since 2004. I, like the other person, I've lived on Longness Road for 20 years myself, and I can tell you that there's been no less traffic on there. And if that was the case, then why did the DDOT come and spend millions of dollars to put the intersection at Erie Road and 303? Because then that would have been ridiculous if the traffic had been reduced.
It took them 13 years to do it.
Yeah, right. That's a whole nother story. Because there's no sidewalk, they wanted to put sidewalks on there, but they won't put sidewalks where the sidewalks are needed. That's a whole nother story.
Did they, when they did the traffic study, did they take in consideration where Orangeburg Road is down to two lanes instead of four? Were going over the, you know, replacing that bridge?
Well, it says the traffic study was done in April of 2017, but, you know, like I said, I believe that the applicant should have the traffic engineer, Mr. Collins, come back and explain that to us.
We do have the traffic engineer who signed the report that works for Mr. Collins, he's here.
He's here right now.
He's here. So, he can come up and speak to that if you want.
No, thank you. I think Mr. Collins should come back and talk to us. What else?
You have a question, sir?
Okay, so go ahead, Mr. Brenner.
Okay, please, you know, I might answer these questions.
Put the mic on.
The first one was Amy Pritchett, I believe lives on 11 South Main Street. She asked her any items being packaged at the warehouse? They are not. The second question was by Mr. Steinberg, who brought up the fact, the emergency access on this property was requested by the fire department. It can only be used by the fire department, it can only be used by the police, it can only be used by the ambulance. It was a request that the fire department wanted, and that's why it's there. They are the only people that can use that, that access.
I guess the question is, where does it go to?
It will go into the road that's being built here if it has to be. If the road is built here, it will connect to that road.
What road?
It actually makes sense to have that. Because I don't have a problem with it. Because otherwise the fire company's got to go up there.
So, here's the cul-de-sac. In that area is the...
The gate opening.
Yes. This would connect to that to allow access to the cul-de-sac. The reason why I believe it was requested by the fire department originally is because this access...
Well, and somebody can correct me, I'm sorry, but the, the emergency exit off the site is outside the bounds of the cul-de-sac, it's not in the cul-de-sac itself, it's...
Correct.
Thank you.
Our property is further south.
Yes.
We would be required to make sure that the emergency access could be, could reach the cul-de-sac.
But that's fenced off, and the keys are held by the fire.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
Is there?
Does everybody understand that?
You have easement or is that the town property?
That's town property. That called, that basin there and that access is town property. Okay, and then that was requested by the fire department. There was a statement about traffic on North Troop Road with the post office, and no trucks from this proposal is going to be in North Troop Road. All traffic will be coming through Route 303. You mentioned something about cleaning up the property. If, if the debris is on the property, it will be cleaned. We have a gentleman here who wrote the report for the traffic study, we'd like to bring him up here and let him explain his report.
What about the trucks, when are the trucks going to come? Hours of, when are the hours of operation?
We gave you the hours.
The trucks are going to come...
Nine to five, basically, and in the busy periods from eight to six.
And there's no trucks overnight, and there's no backup lights after 6 o'clock? Also, I'd like clarification, what exactly is the busy season? You know, what are we talking about? Is there, is there certain months, is there certain weeks out of the year? I'd like to see that as well.
This, this project is in an LI district. This project could theoretically have 24-hour service around the clock. The man is telling you that he's going to do it from 8 to 6. You're putting undue burden on something. He is working with the planning board, he is saying no trucks are coming in after 6 o'clock.
No, 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 that's not what he's saying. He's saying that, for the most part, the trucks are coming in between 8 and 5, I think, or 9 to 5.
Nine to five, and he said they're going to be...
And then sometimes they're going to be coming from 8 to, you know, from 8 to 6.
The trucks, the trucks come in during the day, the shipping goes out around 5 o'clock. That's when the shipping goes out. You've seen this happen many times.
Except in the busy season, when they say that they would like to extend it to 6 o'clock.
That's correct.
And my question is, when is the busy season?
What difference does it make? What difference does it make when he can go 24 hours? If I came to you and say it's going to be in operation 24 hours...
Mr. Brenner, if you want me to speak, I'll speak. If you want to speak, you speak, and then when you ask the question, I'll answer the question, but I'm not going to talk over you.
If this property has a right to operate 24 hours a day...
Okay, so then if you, if it has the right to operate 24 hours a day, then put that in the application.
We're not, we're saying we're going to run from 8 to 6, and that's what we put in the application.
No, you said that, you said that it was going to go from 8, from 9 to 5 for the majority of the time, and from 8 to 6 on some of the other times during the busy season. What I asked is what constitutes that busy season? It's a very simple question.
I, I, I don't know.
Okay, well then you'll have to find out, get back to us.
We won't operate from 9 to 5, we'll operate all the time from 8 to 6, all right? And then we don't have to, we don't have to, we'll operate 8 to 6. Okay? Okay?
And just for a clarification, there's no trucks backing up, there's nothing happening on the property after 6 o'clock at night? No, no lights, no, no forklifts, nothing banging on the road, anything like that? That's what you're saying, is that correct?
That's what the, that's what the applicant has said he's building, and that's what he's going to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, what about the landscape plan?
Pardon me?
What about the landscape plan?
Landscape plan, we'll produce the landscape plan before we come to final, and we'll also present it to the Architecture Review Board. Okay, you want to bring up the traffic engineer, please?
My thing is that they should ask for continuance and the other things that they need, so that's up to me.
Ronald Reiman, R-I-E-M-E-N, with Mesa Consulting, and previously with John Collins Engineers. So, again, I may not be John, but I've been working with Mr. Collins, Professor Collins, for 30 years now. 25, and our last five since we've been with Mesa Consulting. Okay, I could just maybe clarify a couple of things that might help the board. Yes, we've talked about a traffic impact study was done in 2002, 2004, and we did recent counts in April 2017 to determine what the current traffic conditions are along Route 303, and just as important, what's happening along Glen Shore Street, the site, proposed site access. Comparing that to the old study, yes, we show that traffic volumes along 303 have gone down. The traffic along Glen Shore Street has basically remained the same, maybe increased a little bit.
So, let me ask you something.
Yes.
Did you, did you take the same exact times that you did in 2004 and measure the trucks the same exact time, the same exact days back in, from 2004 and in April 2017?
Well, it wasn't, not necessarily the same month we counted, but during the same peak hours typically...
Okay, so what was the month that you did in 2004?
It was a traffic study done by another traffic engineering firm.
Okay, and when was, what was the month?
Would you like me to look it up?
Yeah.
Okay. And anything else, you know, we could always address at a later time if I don't have the answers. The previous counts conducted in 2002 were done in June, June 12th. Again, we counted, and I'll just confirm the dates.
April 2017.
I'll just, please let me confirm that for a second, I appreciate that. We counted March 23rd, 2017. The traffic study was completed in April, but the date of the counts were in March.
Sorry for that.
No, I also said April.
But I don't understand how you could say it's the same traffic if you're not studying at the same month, that, that the flows have gone down. That's what, that's what confuses me.
Typically, when a traffic study is complete, completed, you do the traffic counts during non-summer hours, so it really doesn't necessarily make a difference if you count January, February, March, April, you like to stay away from June. Yes, day by day, there's seasons, there's variations, there's variations during months, but typically, standard practice, you know, you pick a typical month when school's in session, not during the summer when there's no school or vacations and people maybe are off from work. So, it's basically, be it March or June, it's typical conditions. Just to not put any, you know, wet water on the original traffic study, June is a typical time that we don't like to count, because you do have schools, high schools, the graduation class tend to, you know, maybe be out earlier. So, I would put more weight in our March counts than a June count. I put more weight in a March 2017 count than a June 2017. But regardless of that, I know there's some question, and we get this a lot, we've seen in a lot of areas from counts back in 2002, 2005, and it's hard for us to all remember 10 years ago and stuff like that, but a lot of areas, traffic has gone down. I don't know if the workforce is working staggered kind of hours, but we just don't randomly just take what we count, and just to give you a little bit more how we count, we count with cameras now. 25, 30 years ago when I first started, I was one of those lucky guys to, you know, start working for John Collins, but we would go on intersections and manually count every 15 minutes for an hour or two. Now, everything is done with cameras. So, the counts are a lot more accurate. This way, we also get any kind of pedestrian counts, truck counts. It's a much better way of counting. Knowing that the counts have gone down from what a report was out there, because you can't take something back that was out there, and you guys asked the right question, hey, we saw something before. If there wasn't a report out, you would never question our counts. We compare that to New York State DOT historical data, and that has showed from 2002, counts have gone down from 2015, 16, 17, and there's actually was even a peak in this area, and you guys all lived here longer, and you could say, oh, maybe it's because of lows, a project we worked back on 10 years ago probably. But the peak actually in this area along 303 was 2005. So, the counts were even higher in 2005 than we're showing in 2017. So, you could take that for what it's worth. One thing that I like to also point out is the, you know, approved site, or the traffic site that was done originally, was for a 230,000 square foot facility. That would generate roughly 150 cars during the peak AM hour, 150 cars during the PM peak hour. Now, with a reduced size of 170, that number will be about 100 cars during the peak AM hour, and 85 during the PM peak highway hour, that one hour period. And again, we are analyzing the worst-case scenario along Route 303.
And you base that solely on the size of the warehouse, not...
Yes, it's...
What about what's happening in the warehouse?
Okay, I'm, I was going to get to that, and it's a great question. Our counts are based on industry standards. So, anyone that would review the report, another traffic firm, if you hired them, or town traffic engineer, or the state, primarily you would use these industry standards that surveyed over the last 30 years, hundreds of studies, and it's an equation that takes into the variations based on size, and that's how we came up with the numbers. To answer your question, if you, you know, what Mr. Brenner mentioned, that the proposed operation was something about two... that the proposed operation was something about two, three, two to four containers a week. And I think the number was two to three deliveries in and out during the day. There's also mentioned that the number of employees at any given time, which also would be, I'm not sure if it's going to be staggered hours, or we can forget that for a second. The number of employees would be 25. If you just remembered, I just mentioned that based on industry standards, this institute of transportation engineers trip rate, we are assuming 100 trips during the AM peak hour and 85 total trips coming in and out during the PM peak hour. That's a conservative analysis based on the operation. So that should give the board a little bit more comfort that we analyze something that's going to be more intense than what's really going to happen. If you look at average grades, the numbers that we use, we cut in half, which will be consistent with this. So again, our analysis is conservative. I think I hopefully answered anything? Okay. Just give a little more comfort in, you know, what the study was about and, you know, our methodology. If you've got any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Just, no, not for you, just for them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Very helpful.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Mandell has a few follow-up questions. Go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Thank you. What's the distance to the rail trail from your, from the building?
At the closest point, 94 feet.
Okay, but so how does that, how does that work with the buffer, then?
Well, since it's the rail trail, I don't think there is a buffer on that side. It's the residential.
It's like the residential.
Just one other comment. We'd like to see a vicinity map. We really don't have a vicinity map of the area showing exactly where it, looking at the maps you supplied. We don't see a good vicinity map.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah, it shows more than what you're showing. Plus, when you do it, please show the rail trail, that emergency access road through there, so we have a better, clearer view of what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, we did provide a full aerial view on the buffer sheet.
That's.
I can, I will label them on there.
No, I would like, besides that one, I want to see an actual plan that shows it.
Okay.
Because I stood over there with the, you know, aerial, trying to figure it out.
Sure.
I can see the loading bays and that, but it still doesn't give an accurate picture to my, that's just my opinion, but.
So you want, like, a further zoom down one with the aerial, but the proposed?
I think, as we discussed, I think you need that sheet.
Yeah.
Again, further out showing.
Access.
The access all the way through the current aloof situation. So, and as well as vicinity somewhere.
Yeah, and surrounding properties.
I can do that.
And the roadways, the major roadways. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
One of the questions from the public was about Linen Choice, the company and who they are. Is there any information you can provide about the company itself?
Isn't, wasn't there something passed that they have to, there should be full disclosure of who the company is?
Well, the owner of the property is Aloof Real Property Holdings, I think, Incorporated.
They're the owner.
Right.
But who's the applicant? That's not, the applicant is a company that operates in Brooklyn right now, and they are the ones that are buying the property and putting up the building.
So they're buying the property from Aloof?
That is, from Aloof Properties, not, it's a different company. I know, and everybody hears Aloof and.
Well, with good reason.
They get a little agitated, justifiably or not, they get agitated. This is not Aloof Production Company. This is, this is a property that's owned not by the people that are running the production company or the so-and-so. They are selling the property to this particular company who is going to build a warehouse and distribute the material that we're talking about.
It's the intention for Aloof.
It has nothing to do with Aloof packaging. It has nothing to do with Aloof people in terms of ownership or anything of that sort.
But, well, they own it, but they're intending to sell it to this other company.
That is, the person that owns the property does not own the business.
Right.
Aloof business, he does not.
When you say person, the corporation.
The corporation that owns the property does not own or are part of Aloof manufacturing. They are two different entities.
Okay, and Linen Choice.
And there's a reason for it. If you want to go into the executive session, I'll tell you because it's kind of personal as to why they are not the same ownership.
Who is the new corporation?
As to what? What, I didn't get that, what?
It's personal.
The people that own the property are not part of the manufacturing end.
The people that own?
The property is not Aloof Production or whatever you want to call them. They are not.
It says on here, and I haven't checked it, Aloof Real Property, Inc.
That's correct. That's owned by one individual, Mr. Rosenberg, who has no interest in the Aloof plastic industry.
That's, that's not what my, my question.
Well, I thought, I thought that you.
What's, the applicant is Linen Choice. Is that a corporation?
The Linen Choice has no relationship with any of the Aloof people.
Just listen to what I'm asking. Linen Choice, what? Is it a corporation, an LLC? What is it?
It's a corporation.
Linen Choice Incorporated.
But getting back to my question, isn't it supposed to have full disclosure?
The law just passed. It just, like, you know, today, a couple of days ago.
So they have to come back and tell us then? It's two days old.
We could ask for it, yeah.
Okay, so let's ask for it.
I'm not probably giving you that information.
Okay, fine, I'm just telling you.
I'm just saying, when the application was filled out, it was.
Okay. What do you want to do? Please, let's, please, please.
One of the questions was by one of the people was, why did you choose this property when there's other?
Okay.
There are a lot of buildings along 303.
Well, that's, that's not, that's not true. There are not many properties.
And I don't know whether all the zoning is the same, or whatever. I understand the issues.
There are not, there are very few properties in the town of Orange Town that are available with this kind of zoning and for this size building. In fact, I don't know of any.
It doesn't matter. I don't think it should matter.
Please, can I answer the question?
No, just wait a minute. I don't think it should matter because it, that's speculation. You're asking them to do something, they, that's not what, if they wanted to, they could have done that, and they could have come to us. This is, we're not, they don't need to explain why they bought this property. They've bought this, this is their, this is what the site is. And, you know, it's none of our damn business whether or not they researched other property. It's not.
Somebody brought it up.
I understand who's brought it up.
There are no other properties in the town of Orange Town that are available for this size building. There are none. The FedEx building is sold. The piece across the street had zoned properly where the dinosaur be, sold. There are no properties that will support this kind of building in the town of Orange Town.
It doesn't matter. You're bringing this application to us.
This is a good size ratable. This is a ratable. It's going to bring good tax to the South Orange Town School District, and this is not going to harm anybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so what do you want to do? Mr. Warren?
We're still missing quite a bit of information. That's, that's, I don't, between Mr. Giadello and Mr. Peters, there's, there's a lot of unanswered questions. Especially, I think, the biggest thing is that drainage pipe. I don't know what the town wants to do on that. If they're going to approve existing, it's a new application. Does it grandfather it in? I don't know.
Please, please understand, Mr. Warren, I can't get final unless this is answered. In other words, in the old situation, you get preliminary, then you go to the town board and see if they're going to give you the permit. So between preliminary and final, it's either the old one's going to be good, or I have to get a new one, or I can't come back for final. That's your law.
It's also the law that we don't have to give you preliminary, and you go and get it, you come back.
Well, if I don't have preliminary, how am I going to come back? I have to come back with something.
Well, you don't, does he have, does he need preliminary to go to the town to find out if this is to get reaffirmation about the moving? No, you don't. So, okay, I'm going to ask the board, do we want to have this continued and, and get the information that requested, the landscaping plan? And the question of the, and what's that? What else?
Landscaping plan, yes.
And what else?
And the other question that we asked, the site map?
Yes. So all the information that Mr. Mandell had requested, the information that I had requested, I think that you should bring that back with the approval from the town board or reapproval, if that's what it takes for the drainage. So I think you're, you're, you're seeing that you're not going to get.
Well, I'd like to answer a little bit, all right? I would like to answer, no, you, you, you've started, they're throwing stumbling blocks on this project, and I don't know why. This is a good tax ratable.
I'm going to tell you why, okay? Because there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of a, of a neighbor issues with the way Aloof handled everything before. So I'm trying to do my due diligence so that everybody knows that we're not just fast-tracking that because you're here, okay? That's why. So we, I don't think, we're not asking anything that's above the, what's been, I've been here for 13 years, Mr. Brenner, and I'm not asking you anything that I have not asked before. If you think that I am, you have your rights to go and do it if you, that's fine. I don't care. Your, this board tonight is telling you that we require more information than you provided, okay? There's no landscaping plan. We wouldn't let this go through without a landscaping plan, ever, okay? Ever.
You've got a project coming up in a little while, you have no landscaping plan. Please, watch what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay, please, watch what you're saying. This man has met drainage, this man has met traffic, this man has met everyone.
He hasn't met drainage. Mr. Peters is saying in this thing.
Your town consultant has given you drainage approval.
Mr. Peters is saying that there's an issue with the.
Yes, and we resolve it between preliminary and final. It's always done that way. Look at all your records for the last years that you've been on the board.
It's fine, I understand.
I just want to get this in the record. I think I have a right to do this.
And like I said, you have your options to do it.
I, I would like to continue.
I'm going to give you a few more minutes, and then we're stopped, that's fine.
You've got traffic, you've got, the things that you're asking you.
What about the changes to the EAF that Mr. Brenner, that Mr. Mandell brought that have to be changed?
What were the changes? They were very minute changes, which were done.
They still have to be changed, right?
They were.
So there's not, it's not correct, right? So do you want me to go through everything? I can.
What changes was Mr. Mandell that's going to create a problem that you can't go forward? I'd like to know what changed.
Mr. Brenner, we've, I'm not going to keep on going back and forth with you about this. We want a landscaping plan, and we, and the most important thing is we want reaffirmation from the town board that they don't have any problem with diverting the water. That's what we're trying to tell you. I don't think it's, I don't think, I don't, it's, it's, it's a new application. It's not asking anything that's.
These people can turn around and build this building tomorrow at the larger place that you can't do anything about it.
If that's what you want to do, then that's fine. And that way, you know what? Then I have nothing to do with that. Mr. Warren, you're the only person that I could think of. Were you on this board when, when this, this property came?
I don't believe I was.
Were you, Mr. Bond?
I was out there.
Okay. So one person was here out of all of us that saw this application 13 years ago. There's nothing wrong with the, and plus, it's a new application. It's a new application. It doesn't matter what you got 13 years ago. I don't care. I wasn't here. I'm here now.
Why are you holding up this application?
I'm not, because we have.
You don't have the votes to move forward tonight, so I would suggest you ask for continuance. That's what, that would be my suggestion.
Or you could ask us to vote.
Right.
That's your right. What's that?
But typically, as a courtesy, you give the applicant an opportunity to ask for continuance.
One time, when, one time when it got really testy, the applicant said, I want the vote.
I understand. But you don't necessarily have to vote. Even without his consent, you could say, we want these changes and come back.
Okay, so let's do it that way.
But if he wants the opportunity to ask for the continuance to, so that there's no, you know, timing issues or anything, that's typically how it's done.
I would, I would like the application be placed on the next board agenda. I will have the information that you're asking for. But please understand, if this realty deal does not go through, the town is losing a good ratable.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so next up is Project Sycamore, and I have to step out for a second. So you guys can come up and get ready. Jesus, did you guys all sign in?
They gave their names and.
You know. What are you doing? Mr. Quinn, what are you doing? Okay? Killing me. Say your name and your record and your affiliation with the project for the record.
Brian Quinn. I'm the attorney for the applicant, 67 North Main Street, New City, New York.
Peter Zarwinski, mechanical engineer of record, CH2M. Robert Foley, civil engineer, Dewberry Engineers, Inc.
Ed Hustelbacher, project manager, Colliers International.
Jacob, Jacob Rakitic.
Is the light on? Is the green light on?
There it is. Thank you. Jacob Rakitic, lead architect, CH2M.
Okay, what do you got, Mr. Quinn?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. You may recall, this is the proposed data center for J.P. Morgan Chase to be constructed on a property currently owned by the town of Orange Town. Proposal is to buy approximately 61-acre parcel and place a data center there for the use by J.P. Morgan Chase. We appeared before this board on May 24th, made a presentation. At the conclusion of that meeting, we received preliminary approval with conditions and also a negative declaration under SECR. We then were referred to the Akebor. We appeared there on June the 8th. Actually, let me just back up a little bit because at the time when we made the presentation before this board, there were a few questions that were raised by some of the planning board members with respect to landscaping and water usage at the site. I believe there also may have been a question about the fencing. And we went back and we've done some revisions to the plans, and we have people here who will testify as to what those changes were. We then proceeded to Akebor on June the 8th. They also reviewed the landscape, lighting plan, elevations, use of materials. They were generally satisfied with all of those things. We received an approval from Akebor with conditions. We were asked to increase the caliper of some of the trees that we proposed to plant on the site. They asked us to put some plantings in the detention basin. They asked us to preserve the existing fence at the site, fix it up a little bit, make it, make it, you know, look nice, preserve the historical fence that's been there for many years. All of the conditions we agreed to, and they were memorialized in the resolution of approval from Akebor. Last Wednesday, June 21st, we appeared before the ZBA. There was a small variance that was required. We were proposing, because the security at the site must, you know, is a great concern. We proposed an eight-foot fence, six feet was allowed by the code. So we asked for a variance for an eight-foot fence. That was granted. We also went through performance standards, and we received an approval from the ZBA. So now we are back here before this board for final approval for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quinn. I'll let Mr. Mandell go back with his questions about the water usage and the green stuff, but just let me read the comments first, and then we're just going to, we're going to do this the way we always do it. But I, I do know that they'll have answers for you, I think. I shouldn't say, no, I think that they will. So the only question I have, and I don't have them in front of me, I'm sure I could find them, is that, Mr. Quinn, on John Giardello's letter, he says that 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10 have not been addressed.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Okay, they have been addressed.
Okay.
For seven and eight.
Okay.
The second part of seven hasn't been answered, and item eight hasn't been answered. The rest have. I had a different set of plans. I had the stormwater plans, which didn't have the site plan.
Okay.
Corrected that.
So you'll, you'll answer seven and eight for Mr. Giadello before?
Correct. Correct, it's, one is the generator type, which they don't know yet, and the second-
Well, how can they get, how can they get performance standards if they don't know the generator type?
Is it generator type? Hold on a second. Type of generator enclosure, I apologize.
Well, is it the same?
They said they didn't, they were working on that, so, they can explain it probably, better than I can.
Okay, all right. And then, that's, that's, that's it for you? What was the other one? What was the?
Number eight, the details of the substation. They're still working on some of that.
Okay, well, they'll have to work that out with you before they get-
I'm sorry.
The details of the substation.
I could, I could read that if you'd like. Details of the substation shall be provided, such as height of the equipment, height of the enclosure, type of enclosure, et cetera.
Okay, so, what's the story? You haven't figured it out yet?
So, the O and R is, since we haven't acquired the parcel yet, we're still in the process of designing the utility feed.
Okay.
And as such, it's not finalized, we've designed the substation as is typical and what we envisioned.
Fine, okay.
But the specifics are still being determined.
Okay, so that's, that's typical. Okay. All right, so that's, that basically settles his letter from the twenty-fourth. Bruce Peters' letter from June twenty-third, he has eighteen comments.
Yes.
Okay. Rocket County Planning has eighteen. Which ones are you, did we override before? Or which ones are you looking for us to override again?
Well, we're, we're looking at numbers four, five, six, and seven in their current letter. You previously overrode very similar ones. As a matter of fact, four, six, and seven were exactly the same ones that were overridden at preliminary. Number five is a slight variation on things, but we're looking for overrides on all of those.
But what about number three also?
Yeah, what about number three?
You know, that was in the first one, and we kind of explained things. This has to do with the generators, proposed as backup power. The generator screens were all sufficient to attenuate the noise from these generators.
Again, this is one of those things where, because they have to go for performance standards, it's all-
Right.
-been worked out, so-
And they moved it, because it says the northern gener-, oh, do the northern generators still face the residential area?
They do, but they're behind the screen wall.
The, and- You've got performance standards, correct?
Yeah.
So then, would you say, I mean, you know, it's been satisfied?
So it's been satisfied, so we weren't asking for an override.
Okay, so is there anything else on planning that I need to worry about?
Just numbers four, five, six, and seven.
Fine. Highway has five with some comments.
Those are fine.
Health, two. There's nothing to override there.
No.
I mean, and then do we have the Akebor? Anything else, Cheryl? Booker?
You're looking at that, just so we're clear, you submitted two exhibits tonight with respect to the traffic. I just want to make sure, does the board have these?
No. I mean, I guess, oh, yes, I do.
Yeah, so we're, we're prepared to explain those.
Okay.
Answer any questions that you may have.
Please do.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, would you-
Hold on, Booker. Says everything's okay, and there are eleven comments, which I'm sure you don't have any issues with. Doesn't matter, you have to solve, satisfy the issues.
Yes, I believe they conclude by saying it's satisfactory.
Yes, I said that.
With those conditions, yes.
That everything's okay, subject to eleven conditions.
Yes.
Comments.
Yes, in Booker's letter, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thirteen years, just the way it goes. Anything else, Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, I'm just gonna go down the line. Mr. Warren?
I have no question, comments, I think they're gonna make that one.
Mr. Bond?
I'm with her.
Mr. Sweeney?
I just, before you said it, there was an issue with the traffic study, you want these two pictures, but we're going to short version.
Not so much your traffic study, Rob, would you like to handle that question? Because I think those are your exhibits.
So tell us again, oh, you're with CH2M?
No, I'm with Dewberry Engineers. I'm the civil engineer.
What's the civil engineer doing, asking, answering the questions about the traffic study?
Well, it's not a traffic study, it's just traffic.
It's really not, it's just how circulation is gonna be handled on the site with the closure of Maple Street.
With the closure of Maple Street.
And I think what you've got, you've got a reduced size of an aerial exhibit that shows some roadway improvements.
Yes.
Along First Avenue on the east side, and Oak Street to the south. Starting with First Avenue, and this is something that has basically come out of dialogue that we've been having with Office of Mental Health, and what they'd like to see how the property would operate. Presently, First is one of each direction around that administration building, that has some parking around it. The western side of First would be widened to thirty-two feet, made two-way. The present northbound, one-way portion of First would essentially be converted to parking for that admin building. The wider road would allow better circulation. There, it essentially terminates at a cul-de-sac where First is presently closed at this point in time. You either have two choices, you go to the parking lot behind the old church building, building one sixteen, or you make a left and go down Maple. That cul-de-sac would be sized for, for traffic to, if they did go that far north, did not want to take the improved access behind building one sixteen, that the town would, when we butt up to the, or when that improvement hits the property line for that corner of Broad Acres, the intent is that that would be the new access to the gravel over Fowl Lot, that presently is accessed from First, a little, First a little further north. Go around the cul-de-sac, head south, Oak would be widened in a similar fashion to thirty-two feet wide.
But we're still gonna be accessing it through Third Avenue, right?
Yes.
And we have to go the long way around to get the-
No, but not, not like, not off Convent.
There will be no access off of Convent?
Right.
Third Avenue would be the access.
Yeah, Third Avenue would traffic-
Traffic light.
For the traffic light. There's gonna, there's a contribution that's being discussed to improve that light, to make it function a little more than, you know, having hours spent.
Waiting to go onto Convent, right.
Waiting, in waiting.
Right, but it's not, I'm sorry, it's not the existing off of Convent. It's not the existing way you can get to Broad Acres off of Convent.
Yeah, that's the way we, no, no, the existing way to go to Broad Acres is the one up that they're closing.
Right, right, that's why I thought you were referring, I'm saying that's not-
That's the one that they're closing.
Right, right.
Whatever that street's called.
Third Avenue.
It's First Avenue, yes.
So you're closing First Avenue.
All the way, you're closing First Avenue from the chapel down to Convent.
Yes, that, at present, it on, it's closed, it, it's closed, basically blocked off, the OMH has Jersey barriers there, I mean, perhaps the town does.
Just for one way, right now it's one way in, and then you can't come out.
Yeah, it's just, just really, it's just only to access that gravel over Fowl Lot, unless you wiggle your way around through.
Well, I'm just selfish, because I play golf there.
I'm saying, so I see this, this gray road in your picture at Third Avenue, is that still gonna go out to Convent?
No.
For that, because it shows it going all the way up to Convent.
Yeah, Third Avenue is gonna go out, that's the light.
Third Avenue is maintained as it's existing.
I mean, First Avenue, your First Avenue, I see a gray-
First Avenue will not go out to L.A.
Okay, but the picture shows it's the line.
No, the picture shows it.
The picture shows it.
It would be, what's there is, that's a, that's a private emergency ingress egress, that should something happen to the primary entrance to the site off of Third Avenue, that would be available for fire and whatnot.
So First Avenue is emergency exit only.
Yes.
So the only way in and out from the north would be on Third Avenue.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Okay? Okay?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay? Mr. Mandell, you're up.
Thank you. Does this new traffic flow, claim of traffic flows there is more walkway rather than towards Convent?
I would say so, absolutely, with, with First Avenue improvements being done, particularly where the main OMH use, you know, their primary use in the, with the tower, the mid-rise tower complex, it absolutely would encourage traffic to go down towards Veterans Memorial.
Is that, is that like an issue for you, Mr. Mandell?
No, it was just one of the things that were brought up at the last meeting.
Okay, can I just say something, and just out of my opinion? I don't really think it matters, because you're halfway through at, at Oak Street, you're like halfway to veterans-
Yeah.
And halfway to Convent, so it's like, you know.
Well, I think the question is, what they've been proposing is that their traffic for this site-
Come off of veterans?
Right, right. It's not intended to be Convent.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Sure. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
But the construction equipment will all be going out towards veterans and not towards Convent.
Absolutely, that's a good question.
Absolutely.
Okay, now the-
And, and any, and we would be fine even with a stipulation.
Yeah, that should be a stipulation or condition then.
That's fine.
That what? That construction vehicles don't go out to Convent?
Correct.
Do not go out to Convent.
They go out to Veterans Memorial. We were talking last time about the green infrastructure plans, and I haven't seen the landscape plan. Is there a landscape plan given to Akebor?
Yes, there was. We, we just, I can show that, pull it up, the board that was presented, Akebor, and the improvements that were proposed.
Go ahead.
And accepted.
I mean, we asked for, well, I asked definitely for a landscape plan, I haven't seen one yet.
Now we have, now we have to worry about, forgot what my user was.
That should have been-
Am I gonna get picked up on the microphone, or just be loud?
You're good.
You're good. I'm good. This plus, trying to be quick. We had engaged an arborist to do an inspection of the northern portion of the property. He identified twenty-one trees in good health that would survive, or, you know, I mean, clearing out this area, we had talked about security as an issue in the preliminary approval. Twenty-one trees identified outside of the regulated street corridor area. In addition, what they, it was discussed was, and we were agreed to, is he think that on this, this rendering exhibit would be a series of understory ornamental flowering trees that would, you know, all these mature trees are generally, lowest branch height is about forty feet above green. These ornamentals would, that would clear out all the, the brush that is the understory presently, like the ornamentals, in effect, make this a much better tree lawn, still makes in a number of new shade tree plantings where we could, in account that was originally proposed. And Akebor comment was supposed to have these, as all red maples as was originally proposed, to mix it up with a variety of species, which we aren't agreement with. There's also comment that, you know, we had the out parcel that's still owned by OMH, not as part of this, they had a request to continue this tree one enhancement along Convent Road, all the way to Third Avenue, just because it is a common frontage between the two, two properties. Also, there was another landscaping committee comment regards to the detention basin at the southwest corner of the property, where there's a fairly substantial gradient slope. We are proposing to fully plant this with a variety of shrubs, trees, ornamentals, is to take that, that tree to one quarter of the slope and not have it there, press it up. Also, we got on this plan as well, a specific water column and seed mix to plant at the bottom of the basin, with this, well, in addition to those plantings on the, the slope on the backside.
If I remember correctly, at the last meeting, when we talked about the fence along Convent Road, that brush there, and everything that was there was gonna be left intact. Now we're changing it. And I haven't had a chance to see these, this is the first time I'm seeing the landscape plan, which I had asked for at the last meeting, and they said we would get a copy of it. We still have the final approval, no matter what Akebor says, that's the way I read it, and I haven't seen this plan. And we asked about what we're gonna do with the rainwater runoff. It's all gonna go to that detention pond there? Is it gonna have aquatic plants in it? Is it the rain garden type of detention pond?
Yes, it is. It's got a four-band micro pool, and the water comes into those, to the smaller area on the inlet side, raises up to a point, spills over a burn, ends up in the greater detention portion, raises up, ends up in the, in the micro pool before being discharged out. So the water is, besides being decaying for quantity, that slow process through the various pools within the basin is what also gives you the local water quality treatment.
Is that all the water from your-
The roof, is all, is the roof rainwater runoff that's coming down, you got this and everything going into this?
Yes, it is.
And none of that's gonna be used for part of your irrigation systems, or anything to that effect?
No, right now the intent is that these are all data plantings, once established, they would not require any irrigation.
So you intend to clear cut everything that's except for those tall trees along Convent Avenue?
Not, not exactly. There, we, as I said, we identified trees in that wooded area between the building location and, and Convent Road. We have the other shade trees proposed. The existing trees are, we are showing to remain out toward the fence. We also did, and I failed to mention, extensive tree inventory of the entire sixty-one acres per town ordinance regulation. Every tree was identified and measured for those species and trunk caliber over eight inches in diameter, that there was a, that, that set was also submitted and documented. What I can offer is, and I don't have a-
So, is the other?
Everything, essentially, everything that we can save, we are saving. And that includes everything south of the building.
The last time we were talking at the last meeting, we said, it was my understanding that the, that large area of brush and trees that were along Convent there was gonna stay as it was natural. Now it's being all cleared out, and other trees are being planted.
It's being selectively cleared out. But the, 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 like, the-
But that's different from what we discussed at the last meeting.
Well, we're, what we're trying to do is, is make it frankly more, more attractive than, than what is at present there. We agreed to, this is part of this. We have the existing facility fence that's, that is in that part of the site, as well as clear out, you know, it's really the, a very invasive amount of brush and not, not do follow vegetation that's there. Go ahead, you want to speak? Go ahead.
Mr. Mandell, my name's Jake Rakitic, we are, I remember your colleague, who was not present tonight, asked us to save as many trees as possible. That was the direction we left this meeting with last time. That was the impetus for Mr. Foley's tree survey, and the underlying concern from our customers' point of view is physical security of the site. So that was the conflict. Save as many trees as possible, but yet maintain the requisite security that's needed at this building. So, Mr. Foley's arborist completed the tree survey. In conjunction with that, we have the, it's not technically a wetland, is that true, Rob? It's a, some area that we have to keep, leave the existing trees.
It's basically a repair core, it's a stream corridor.
It's a stream corridor. So, in conjunction with that stream corridor and the tree survey, we've proposed retaining the trees as he's indicated on this plan. As far as the brush, my notes from that meeting, not to be in conflict with anyone, but I took away, we were to save as many trees as possible. The brush, for my customer, is a problem in terms of visible security out to the roadway. And from Akebor, we left with the intention to rehabilitate the existing fence. That's where we're headed with our proposal to you tonight.
Well, my recollection is a little different. I know what Mr. Dell said, but I also remember what I said.
Okay.
And I had asked specifically about that area that would not be touched. The security angle was when you talked about the eight-foot fence, and you said that you didn't want trees within that distance, I don't know if the term, somebody used it about tar zair going over the fence, I remember that very clearly. And we said there was no problem near the fence to prevent something like that from happening. But when we talked about that area along Convent, it was to be left natural, the way it was, the way it's always been. I mean, it is a habitat also for the animals in the area. So that was my thing on that. And we had asked, I had asked specifically, and I think Mr. Dell did too, who's not here tonight, we wanted to see a landscape plan. We have never seen, I've never seen to this time tonight, a landscape plan. That's, I think is, is, I mean, that's, I'll leave it at that. Okay, last time, and I think the chairman brought it up, we talked about the twenty percent, you were talking about, I think, evaporation of the water.
We talked about where the refrigeration, what the refrigeration effect is, and what the, what the water is, what's happening with the water.
Yeah, what's happening with the water from the- Yeah, what's happening with the water from the.
Um, as you requested, that our mechanical engineer attend tonight, he's here, Mr. Pete Swin.
Hi, uh, yes, if the, if the specific question is what happens to the water, uh, in terms of cooling the data center, uh, the particular area where that is being employed, um, we intend to, uh, deploy an indirect evaporative cooling solution, um, which, uh, it has compressors onboard, like a traditional air conditioning unit, however, we're using the outdoor air and water as an economization, uh, method. So a lot of that water's gonna be evaporated, and we do have to send a portion of that water after it has gone through several cycles of cooling, uh, as it accumulates particulates, um, hardness, i- it comes to a point where it could damage the equipment, so we send it to the drain. So it's still clean water, um, it's just, it's like very hard water that you're sending to the drain, but it's, it's done a, a big, uh, effort in the cooling.
Okay, and where's that water gonna go then?
They're not saving it.
Not saving, I know that.
It goes to sanitary.
Goes straight to the sewer treatment plant?
Yes.
And is, uh, the particles or whatever, the hard water there, is that they, uh, a problem for our, uh, have we spoken to the, uh?
It's not, it's, it's part, part of the refrigeration, it's not, okay, and I'm not, you know, uh, we don't, it's, it's typical of all, anything that's in this, in this county or in this state that goes down into the drain. You don't have to pre-treat it, it's, the, the, the effluent systems, it, the sewer systems can handle it.
Okay.
And if they couldn't, they would be back up here saying, we, you know, you're not allowed to, you can't tie it in.
That's the question.
Same concept as a cooling tower system.
Right, it's a cooling tower system.
Right. Now that water can't be used for anything else, irrigation or anything else, uh, that will reduce your water in, uh, intake from sewers?
It could, but it would be, uh, we'd, probably financially unfeasible to, uh, employ the extra equipment and technology to, to make that happen.
Now, was the buffer on the Convent Avenue side, that fence, is it, that fence is now one hundred feet, your fence is one hundred feet from Convent Avenue?
More than, I believe, Convent Road.
The last plans I saw, it looked like it was a hundred feet.
It is, it is, it is one hundred feet from the, the property line, from the road right away. And that right there, the, the technical measurement.
Yeah, okay, so that's, it's a hundred feet then, from the eight-foot high fence to the, uh, to that, and then what's the distance from that to the buildings?
From, from the fence, uh, to the building is, uh, in excess of three hundred and sixty feet, uh, three hundred and sixty, three hundred and seventy feet.
I thought it was, uh, was that because of the, John, was that because of the substation that we were asking for a two-hundred-foot buffer, or now it's only a hundred foot is the frontage, okay. Now, what lands that stream bed, where the stream was, you said that area's not gonna be touched at all, or is that gonna be cleaned out?
Not gonna be touched at all, it has been delineated as a, uh, essentially a do-not-disturb area.
Where is that specifically in relation to your fence and the Convent Avenue?
Just, if I have it, it's the C three hundred, which depicts utilities, uh, but it is this teardrop shaped area, and I could go to it and go cut sheet and show the delineated points for it, uh, but there's no button associated with it. The security fence, uh, shown, around my finger, that we discussed, a hundred feet from the, however, right away, uh, the building is from the, the security fence, uh, or this between, about three hundred and sixty feet, um, and this area, our, our ring road is destroying as one inch equals one hundred and twenty feet, so that's roughly two tenths, so that's about, we're about twenty-five feet away, this is a flat area down at the bottom, where it's really just a, a lawn area at present, uh, and it stands out for the, for the, further to the east, up to at the, at the high side of our disturbance line is approximately a hundred feet from what is the, the start of it at the outfall, under present, uh, post obstacle.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Mandel, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this?
Yes.
You have three minutes. Let's get up to the, let's get up to the, uh, party and state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Donald Brenner, I live at Tendos, Secord, Orangeburg, New York, I am in favor of the project, I just want these answered for the record. Number one, was there a landscaping plan at preliminary?
You don't have to answer any of these questions if you don't.
Don't feel like it, just so you know.
Two.
Go ahead.
What was the first question again, Mr.?
Was there a middle?
Was there a landscaping plan at preliminary, when this got preliminary approval?
Go ahead, Mr. Brenner, what's next?
Two, where's the guarantee that no construction equipment is gonna come through Convent Road? Three, the hours of operation, what are you doing when you're building the, the, the project, what are, gonna be your hours of operation? Four, do you have a permit from sewer department to discharge hard water into their system? And five, did you make a disclosure who the owners are?
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, okay, so, um, I need a motion for, oh, final with conditions.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Can I just respond to some of the comments?
Oh, certainly, go right ahead.
Also, Mr. Brenner, uh, there's some that are very easy to respond to. Um, one is, yes, we've made full disclosure as to who the owner and operator is.
Yes, okay, I, I.
It's J.P. Morgan Chase, that's the name of the applicant.
Right. You're not talking anymore, you're out of order. Go ahead.
That's, let me just say, that's not a requirement under.
It's publicly traded.
Publicly traded corporation, so they don't have to do the stockholders' names. Right, and this is on for final.
It was in before that law.
Well before, yeah.
Well, it's, it's an easy response.
Just go ahead, let's, let's, let's keep going, please.
From J.P. Morgan Chase, always from the, from the beginning here. Uh, with respect to permits from sewers, uh, obviously we'll need to get that, if, if anyone is required.
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I, I don't remember, I think there were five points, I don't remember specifically what they were.
Hours of construction?
It doesn't matter, I don't care, you don't answer in it, I don't care if you answer.
Hours of operation with testimony at preliminary.
Let Mr. Brenner do what he has to do, he's just being vindictive, go ahead.
Okay.
Eddie, I would like you to answer the questions from Mr. Mandel, though.
Yes. Mr. Mandel, I'm sorry, 'cause I know you were at project review committee, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that you had a copy of the landscape plan, if somehow that was not presented, I would like to incorporate this landscape plan as part of our proposal here, I was under the impression that it already was, it was submitted and approved by, by Akebor. With respect to clearing along Convent Road, we did get some comments back on Akebor about that, and Jake and Rob, you were there, please, you made the presentation with the landscape, but as I recall, there was a request to clear out some of the invasive underbrush right by Convent Road. We're, we're just trying to respect whatever the requests are here, um, you know, it's, we also got a request, and, and I wanted to clarify, that out parcel in the upper left-hand corner of that is gonna continue to be owned by, uh, O M H, that's not part of the parcel that the town owns or that we're going to be acquiring. There was a request by Akebor that we consult with O M H to clear out portions of that with the under, uh, undergrowth and the invasive species, that came from the Akebor committee. We will work with them, um, but again, we wanna be respectful of your requests, um, so again, whatever you folks decide by way of conditions for final approval, you know, we're certainly willing to, uh, listen to the requests and abide by them, just got a little bit of conflicting stuff from Akebor on this, though, so, again.
Okay, Mr. Mandel, you don't have to vote for it, but I'm just asking, you have any questions?
Did I?
Okay.
Did I answer your questions?
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. I don't really have to, okay, so I need a motion to close the public portion, thank you, Mr. Bond, who seconds? Mr. S, uh, Warren, sorry, a little tired.
And Mr. Chairman, just before you go to the final, did you vote, did you finish?
No, we voted to close the public portion.
The, um.
Aye.
Okay. The, uh, the reason I was asking for the traffic, or at least the flow, um, was because this is a, a complicated site, obviously, um, with the existing roads and existing buildings which are gonna be, uh, removed, and what's going to be there once this project is in, there's a, what's called a memorandum of understanding that's being circulated between the town, uh, the applicant and O M H in terms of all the roads, some of the roads are owned by the town, some of the roads are owned, owned by O M H, some ultimately will be owned or, you know, will be, uh, on their, on property that will be the applicant's, so, um, that's why, you know, there's easements back and forth, I will put in as a condition for approval by the board, uh, that all those easements and everything should be in place, I believe, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so that the flow and everything is, is, you know, properly in order. Um, again, the easements exist now, uh, there's really no, nobody preventing anyone from going anywhere, but it is a complicated situation that should be a part of the site plan approval, uh, and the memorandum of understanding will be in there.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Jake, what was the last point I got?
Okay, so, uh, I need a, I'm sorry, the motion for final with conditions? Mr. Bond, so, John Giordella's, we're putting in seven and eight, is that correct?
Second, please.
What's that?
The last sentence, number seven.
The last sentence, last number, the last sentence of number seven and number eight. Bruce Peters, eighteen. Rockland County Planning, one, two, three, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, we're putting in. I need a motion to override, to reaffirm the override of number four. Mr. Bond, Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you can use the same one, the same reason that we did the last time, number five, I need a motion.
By Akebor also.
What's that?
I'm sorry, the approval by Akebor also has reviewed this and you have reviewed.
Right, okay, so then you, Mr. Magrino, you could, you could just fill in what, number five, I need a motion to override number five. Mr. Warren makes a motion, Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number six, additional landscaping must be provided around the generators to help act as a noise barrier, again, uh, they went, I need a motion to override number six. Mr. Warren's, makes a motion, Mr. Sweeney, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's because they went for, uh, performance standards, and they met the performance standards for the town of Orange Town. Also, uh, anybody that deals with emergency generators will know, unless you're putting four or five hundred miles worth of trees in front of the generators, that a screening is not gonna do anything to abate the noise. So I hope that somebody in the Rockland County Planning Department looks into that before they put in, back into one of their conditions, because it's ridiculous. Uh, number seven, I need a motion to override number seven, Mr. Bond makes the motion, Mr. Warren, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, they have a landscaping plan that was approved by Akebor, okay. Rockland County Highway has five with all of their bullets. Rockland County Health, two. Then the Akebor, uh, Minutes in, with reference to this project, and Brooker with their eleven. Anything else, Cheryl? That's all I have, so I need a motion, I mean, I, so I need a second. Mr. Warren, seconds, all in favor?
Oh, wait, 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 did you wanna put a condition in, a construction vehicle should not go out onto?
That's fine, we'll put that condition in there. They're not allowed on Convent Road, what else?
Well, should not, yeah, to the extent practical, and the issue I mentioned about the easements and memorandum of.
The memorandum of understanding between the three parties will be finalized before a issuance of a C O.
C O, thank you.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Warren.
I'll put language in there.
Puts the second. Who, who primaried? Mr. Warren primaried, who seconded? Bond first, Warren second, all in favor? Aye, against?
Opposed to Mr. Mandel, but Mr. Bond, we never received the landscape plan, which we asked for at the last meeting, and, uh, we do have the final statement on landscaping, no plan should be accepted, my opinion, so that landscape plan is the best we can do.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, the se, uh, what do I have for, uh, okay, you guys are gone, thank you.
Just, just to clarify one thing, on the overrides, it was a unanimous vote, five?
Yes, yes, that's, I, I made that. Except, and, and, Mr. Mandel, I just wanna make sure that you know that number six was not in there in the last meeting, but it was.
It was all over.
Right, so we just reaffirmed and restated why we overrode them. Cheryl, what is my other business?
Thank you.
Oh, that's it, we took camera, right? Okay, so I need a motion for minutes from, uh. Mr. Bu, Mr. Mandel makes a motion, second, Mr. Bond, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then a motion to close, Mr. Warren, Mr. Bond, thank you.